All right, everybody, it's six thirty. Just for everyone's information, we're kind of in a weird situation in that none of our previous board officers are still on the board. So I've talked to the holdover board members, as they're called, the folks who were already in office before this election cycle. And I'm going to start the board meeting and then let me get to the president, the election of the President Pro Tem. When that person is put into office, then I'll turn it over to that person to continue with the meeting. So with that, I'd like to call us to order with a flag salute. And a moment of silence.
I'd like to lead the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. Baldino?
Here.
Ms. Boharts?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Kramer?
Here.
Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Scaff?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, would you also read the list of the full board?
Region one, Mr. Scaff. Region two, Ms. Lynch. Region three, Mr. Rodriguez. Region four, Mr. Johnson. Region five, Ms. Boharts. Region six, Dr. Baldino. Region seven, Mr. Miller. Region eight, Mr. Cannon. Region nine, Ms. Kramer.
Thank you. Next up is the reading of the certificates of election. Ms. Taylor?
Members of the Clinton County Board of Elections hereby certified that after calculating the votes cast at the municipal general election held on the fourth day of November twenty twenty five, it appears that Elizabeth Lynch, Shelby Boharts, John Miller, and Mary Kramer were duly elected to the office of the School Board Directors for a four-year term.
Thank you. We are very fortunate tonight to have Judge Miller with us to provide the oath of office for, I'm sorry, George Wright, I'm so sorry, George Wright here with us, oh my goodness, to provide the oath of office for our newly elected members. So if I could have the three newly elected members go to the front table and Judge Wright, if you would be so kind.
Is anyone going to take a picture?
Could you take a picture?
Thank you.
You can raise your right hand for me, please. Hard with the mic, alright. I do solemnly affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I do.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Gather around, raise your real quick for a picture.
Yes, could we do a whole board picture right here, please? How they have to do a couple of rows. Let Chris come up here.
Alright, here we go. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
As we're getting started, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the new board members for being willing to step into a very public role and a critical role, supporting our students, our staff, and our community through your service to the board. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Resolution E one, which is the appointment of a President Pro Tem to conduct the rest of the reorganization meeting. So the eligible nominees are Mr. Cannon, Mr. Johnston, Dr. Baldino, Mr. Scaff, and Mr. Rodriguez. Would, I'm open to any nominations for President Pro Tem to conduct the balance of this meeting.
Would Elizabeth not be on that?
Did I miss that? Ms. Lynch, I apologize, yes, Ms. Lynch should be on that as well.
I nominate Elizabeth.
One nomination for Elizabeth, thank you. Any other nominations?
Temporary, yes.
Yeah.
I'll nominate Jeff Johnston.
Nomination for Jeff Johnston, any other nominations? Final call for nominations. Okay, with two nominees, do both of you accept nomination for President Pro Tem to conduct this reorganization meeting? Ms. Lynch?
I prefer not to, because Jeff did it before, he did a great job, unless you, is that okay?
Mr. Johnson, do you accept the nomination?
I guess.
Okay, all those in favor of having Mr. Johnston act as President Pro Tem for the balance of this meeting, the reorganization meeting, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Mr. Johnson, it's your meeting.
Alright. Sure I'm in the right spot here. Okay, at this point, I believe, let me just make sure I'm in the right spot. We are looking at nominations for the Office of President. Open the nominations for the Office of President, the Board. Hearing the nomination?
Shelby, talk into your mic.
I nominate Elizabeth.
Okay, Elizabeth Lynch, nominated by Shelby. Here, any other nominations? Last call. Okay, hearing no other nominations, then we have no need for a roll call vote, since this... So, yes, we would have... Do we need now, do we need any votes for?
Yes, you need to...
Okay, alright, and then in this case, since we have one nomination for President, all, I think we could do this by voice vote, all in favor of Elizabeth Lynch for the Office of President, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Me.
One, one no. So that would be eight yes, one no.
Jeff, I voted no, too.
Oh. Excuse me, seven yes, two no. Okay, moving on to the Resolution F one. Do we have a motion to approve Elizabeth to the Office of Board of President?
I move.
Okay, do I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. So all in favor of the motion to approve Elizabeth Lynch as...
Mr. Johnston, point of order. Could we have any discussion?
Oh, excuse me. Is there any discussion on the resolution for Elizabeth to be President? Any comments? Okay. I guess we... So... I guess we need a motion for this. Have a motion to approve Elizabeth for President of the Board.
We did the motion in second, and so we're just waiting for the vote on the first one, and then we'll do the board for CTC after that.
Okay. Alright, so we need to do Resolution F one, correct?
Correct. Then just need to vote on that.
Alright, so all in favor of approving the Resolution F one to elect Elizabeth Lynch as the Board President for the Keystone Central School Board, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Seven yes, two no. So be it resolved that Elizabeth Lynch will serve as the elected President of Keystone Central School Board of Directors for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. Okay. Moving on, I guess to Resolution F two. For the CTC, do I have a motion to approve Elizabeth Lynch as the President also of the Keystone Central Career and Technical Center, from the School Board? Have a motion for that.
I'll make it.
Okay, Mr. Cannon? Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is there a possibility for another board member, if they so choose to take this position? Are we bound by policy that it would be me? You know?
At this point, by policy, since you've been elected, you can step down if you like, that's your prerogative.
Okay, yes, that's what I prefer to do.
Alright, since she's declining that, do I have a nomination for President of the CTC Board of the Keystone Central School District?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Chris Scaff, please, to represent us in the CTC.
Okay, Mr. Scaff has been nominated to be President of the Career and Technical Center. Are there any other nominations for that position?
Can I nominate myself? I nominate Mary Kramer.
Okay. So we have Mr. Scaff nominated and Ms. Melissa, you go by. Mary, okay. Ms. Kramer. Okay, any other nominations? Okay, do I have a motion to close nominations this time?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Scaff, do I have a second? Mr. Rodriguez? Thank you. Okay. Ms. Taylor? I think we need a roll call vote.
Dr. Baldino?
Ben.
I'm sorry.
Ben. But we're voting for...
Yes, this is for the President of the CTC.
So I'm voting for Ms. Kramer.
Okay.
What did he say, I'm sorry?
Ms. Kramer.
I'm sorry, Christine.
Oh, that's okay. Ms. Bohart? Scaff? Scaff? Mr. Cannon?
Chris.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Ms. Kramer.
Ms. Kramer?
Kramer.
Kramer.
Ms. Lynch?
Chris Scaff.
Mr. Miller?
Chris.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Chris.
Mr. Scaff?
Me.
Mr. Scaff had six votes, Ms. Kramer had three.
Okay. So Mr. Scaff has been elected as the Keystone Central School Board of Directors. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution F two to appoint the Keystone Central School Board of Directors as the Keystone Central Career and Technical Center? Be it resolved that the Keystone Central School Board of Directors appoints the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors as the Directors for the Keystone Central Career and Technical Center? Be it further resolved that Mr. Chris Scaff will serve as the elected President of the CTC Board of School Directors for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the reorganization meeting in twenty twenty six? Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Okay, one no, I believe. Eight to one. Okay. Nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Is this where it goes by the President, it says?
Yes, so this, we should turn it over to the... Yes, so this guy has the board chair, you can now take over the remainder of the standing elections.
Thank you, Jim, good job. Item G one, nominations for the Office of Vice President. I'd like to open up the floor to nominations for a School Board Member for Vice President. Any nominations?
I nominate John Miller.
Any other nominations? Nominations closed. Item G two, Resolution G one. This is a motion to approve John Miller as the elected Vice President of the Keystone Central School Board District for the year commencing December fourth and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting twenty twenty six.
I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion.
I second.
Second? Any discussion? The motion is, be it resolved that John Miller serve as the elected Vice President of the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors for the year commencing December fourth and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. Any questions? All those in favor, say yes.
Aye.
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 All those say no, opposed? Motion carries. Item G three, Resolution G two. Be it resolved that the Keystone Central School District School Board Members appoints the Keystone Central School District Board of School Directors as Directors of the Keystone Central School Career and Technical Center, and be it further resolved, they'll serve as the elected Vice President of the CTC Board of School Directors for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. I'd like to open up the floor to nominations, please. If there's anyone besides the Vice President?
Tom.
We have a nomination for Mr. Tom Cannon. Any other nominations?
I nominate Mary Kramer.
Nomination for Mary Kramer? Any other nominations? Nominations closed.
Madam President, question, how many candidates do we have, three? Am I, am I correct?
Two, we have Mary Kramer.
But Mr. Miller is not...
And, Mr. Miller, I'm so sorry. Did you want the appointment as Vice President? I, I...
So, if I may...
Yes.
Typically, one person is elected to both the CTC Board and the regular school board. The CTC does not have its own separate set of board meetings or activities separate from
Okay.
regular board meetings. So while it is completely up to the board to elect a separate and different set of officers for the CTC Board, it is... It won't make much of a difference, because there's not a separate set of meetings for the CTC compared to the school district.
Uh huh.
So typically, the school district has elected one person to serve as both the School Board President and/or Vice President, and the CTC President or Vice President.
Uh huh.
So, to the, back to the question of, it's, it's, the board can choose to elect different people if you want.
Uh huh.
Typically, we haven't, because there's not really a separate board for the CTC.
Understood. But thank you for the clarification.
So we have two people.
Two people, John, did you?
Yes.
You want to nominate yourself?
Yes.
Yes, and John Miller, please, three people. Any other nominations? Nominations closed. Roll call vote, please. Since we have three members, the motion is, be it resolved that Keystone Central School Board of Directors appoints the Keystone Central School Board Directors for the Keystone Central Career and Technology, be it resolved, we have three positions. One in order. It's Mary Kramer, correct? Was she nominated first?
No.
No, Mr. Cannon was.
Tom Cannon, I'm so sorry, Tom Cannon, Mary Kramer, John Miller. How would you like to do the vote? What would be best for you?
We could do a roll call.
Okay, I prefer a roll call vote, please just mention the candidate's name, is everybody clear? Okay, thank you, please proceed.
Ms. Boharts?
Mary Kramer.
Mr. Cannon?
Myself.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Miller.
Ms. Kramer?
Mr. Miller.
Ms. Lynch?
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller?
Myself.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Scaff?
Tom.
Dr. Baldino?
Mr. Cannon.
Mr. Miller had five votes, Mr. Cannon had three, and Ms. Kramer had one.
Thank you. G three, be it resolved that the Keystone Central School District Board of School Directors appoints the Keystone Central School District Board of School Directors of the... Please let me start over, I'll speak slower. Be it resolved that the Keystone Central School District Board of School Directors appoints the Keystone Central School District Board of School Directors as the Directors for the Keystone Central Career and Technical Center, and be it further resolved that John Miller serve as the elected Vice President for the CTC Board of School Directors for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. Motion to approve? Any, I'm so sorry, any discussion? No discussion? Do I have a motion to move this, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item H one. I move to approve Resolution H one, to be resolved that candidate be appointed to the PSBA Liaison for the Keystone Central School District for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. I'd like to open this up for nominations, please.
Elizabeth.
Nominations, please. Hearing no other nominations, nominations are closed. Be it resolved that Elizabeth Lynch be appointed as the PSBA Liaison for Keystone Central School District for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. Any discussion, please? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. Item H two, Resolution H two, sorry, H one, I'm sorry, H two, Resolution H two. I move to approve Resolution H two. Be it resolved that Christine Taylor be appointed to the PSBA Employee Relations Contact for the Keystone Central School District for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion closed? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Motion carries. Thank you. Item Item H three, Resolution, Resolution H three. Motion, I move to approve Resolution H three. Be it resolved that a School Board Candidate be appointed as a representative of the school, as to the intermediate, central intermediate unit number ten, Board of Directors for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. May I have some nominations, please?
I nominate Mr. Johnson.
Nominations?
Miss Lynch.
Nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations are closed. Roll call vote. Would be it resolved that there are two candidates to be appointed as a central intermediate unit number ten, Board of Directors? I'm so sorry, Bill, what did you say again? Who'd you nominate?
Mr. Johnston.
That's it, thank you. Mr. Jeff Johnston, and the other nomination is Elizabeth Lynch. Roll call vote, please, state your preference.
Mr. Cannon?
Elizabeth.
Mr. Johnson?
Myself.
Ms. Kramer?
Johnston.
Ms. Lynch?
Elizabeth Lynch.
Mr. Miller?
Lynch.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Lynch.
Mr. Scaff?
Lynch.
Dr. Baldino?
Mr. Johnston.
Ms. Bohart?
Lynch.
Ms. Lynch had six votes, Mr. Johnson had three.
Thank you. Be it resolved that Elizabeth Lynch be appointed as a representative of central intermediate unit number ten, Board of Directors for the year commencing December fourth, twenty twenty five, and ending at the Board Reorganization Meeting in twenty twenty six. We have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second, yes, thank you very much, any discussion? Discussion closed, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Motion carries, thank you. Item I one, Resolution I one. This is the attachment. I move to approve Resolution I, one, be it resolved that the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors approve the board meeting schedule for 2026 as shown in the exhibit. There is a PDF exhibit that shows, um, two meetings every month. Starting in January, a work session followed by the following week, a voting session with the exception of December. That shows, uh, December 3rd is a reorganization meeting followed by a voting meeting only. I move to approve Resolution I, one, be it resolved that Keystone Central School District Board of Directors approve the board meeting schedule for 2026 as shown in the exhibit. Do we have a motion? To approve as presented? No motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Jeff Johnson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by John Miller. Discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Chris, you have the floor.
Uh, because the December meeting is a reorganization straight into a voting meeting. Uh, I would highly recommend that the voting meeting get moved to the second Thursday as it is every other month through the year. And we do a reorganization meeting and a work session. And then we do a voting meeting on the second Thursday as we do the other 11 months. Otherwise, we could be here forever. So, I would like to make a motion that we change December's meetings to the 3rd and the, uh, 11th, I believe it is. So we make it, the 3rd a work session and we make the 11th the voting meeting.
Um, Secretary. It is the 10th.
Is it the 10th?
Yeah.
Okay, then the 10th. I'm sorry, I haven't wrote down the 11th.
Could you please restate your motion to move, please?
Yeah, the motion I'm making is that the December 3rd meeting is a reorganization and a work session. And the voting meeting get moved to the 10th. I don't know why I have it as the 11th.
It is confirmed as, it's December 10th?
Yes, it's the 10th.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Mr. Scaff. The motion is to approve to approve the calendar as presented with an amendment in December. The amendment is the December reorganization will remain December 3rd. December 3rd meeting will be moved to a work session. The amendment includes the addition of a voting session the following week, December 10th. Do I hear a motion to move that?
I motion.
My second.
Motion, second. Any discussion, please? Discussion closed? All those in, let's do a roll call vote on this one, please. The motion is to accept, be it resolved that Keystone Central School District Board of Directors approves the meeting schedule for 2026 as shown in the exhibit with the modification, December 3rd will remain as a reorganization meeting. The amendment is, December 3rd meeting will be also a work session, not a voting session. And the December 10th meeting will be added and it will be the voting session. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Scaff?
Yes.
Dr. Baldino?
No.
Ms. Bohart?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Seven yeses, two no's.
With the conclusion of the meeting, I'd like to call adjournment, please, at 7:05 PM. Do I have a motion to move, close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Motion on the tables to close the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
No.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Question. Thank you for your patience and for being here this evening.
I'll have someone.
Okay, super terrific. Uh, good evening. Welcome to the Keystone Central School District December 4th Voting Meeting. I'd like to make an announcement that we went into executive session at 7:08 this evening and it ended at 7:16. The topic of discussion was the pending resignation of our current Assistant Superintendent Randy Zengaram. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Item A1. Call to order, flag salute, please. I'll rise. Followed by a moment of silence.
The pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item A3, roll call, please.
Dr. Baldino?
Here.
Ms. Boharts?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Kramer?
Here.
Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Scaff?
Here.
Nine members present.
President Elizabeth, could I ask a question here?
Yes, Chris, you have the floor, please.
Uh, seeing as we have such a lengthy item to go through uh, for an agenda and our three new members just got their computers. They have no understanding at all. John didn't even have one yet. Uh, I asked that we take this from a voting meeting and make it a work session so that these folks can have the week to go through the agenda and learn a bit about it, learn what we're gonna do. And make the voting session next week, which is December 11th. That's where I had the 11th messed up from earlier. So we stay with the same situation we use all year long. We do make tonight a work session, make next Thursday night a voting session. And that gives the new members a fair chance to learn where we're going.
Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion on the floor to move the current voting session as presented to a work session. And the motion for the voting session to happen the following week, Thursday, December 11th.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
I second that.
May I have a comment? We, we need a motion first, please.
I thought you just said that we had the motion.
No, that, that was reading the motion.
Oh.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, then I make the motion.
Yes, okay, motion. Do I have a second?
I'm second.
Yeah.
I actually made the motion.
Yes.
So Tom second.
Second. Oh, you're right. I'm so sorry, Tom, you're correct. I was wrong. For this one, um, is there any discussion besides this, please? No discussion? I'd like a roll call vote on this, please. The motion is to move the current voting session as presented to a work session effective immediately. Next week, December 11th, will be a voting session starting at 6:30. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Baldino?
Yes.
Ms. Bohart?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. J-, Mr. Miller?
Yep.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Scaff?
Yes.
Eight members yes, one member no.
Okay. It's announced that currently, as of right now, this is a work session. A work session differentiates from a voting session. During a work session, it's a good time to deliberate, voice our opinions. But there is no voting. Next week, we're gonna meet here. It's 6:30. And of course, the agenda will be up. It may or may not change. So please be advised of that. Let the work session begin. Item B1. The business manager will present a 2024-25 end of the year financial report for the district, providing a comprehensive overview of the revenues, expenditures, the resulting fund balance for the fiscal year. The presentation will highlight revenue sources, key expenditure drivers, variances from approved budget, and the final audited fund balance position. Emphasis will be placed on financial trends, sustainability considerations, and any implications for the upcoming budget. I welcome to you our business manager, Joanie, Joanie McIntyre. Um, Joanie, you've, you've put in a nice attachment. We appreciate it. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I am Joanie McIntyre. I'm the business manager here at the school district. So the second slide will give you a snapshot of our, uh, July 24 to June 25 fiscal school year. You see on the left-hand side is our 24-25 budget and the right is the 24-25 actuals. The expenses were actually increased by 4.3, almost 4.4 million dollars. So there was an increase in expenses to what we had budgeted. The revenues were increased as well um, by 1.6 million. So the difference between the two is the 2.7 million dollar, uh, deficit between the budgeted numbers and the actual numbers. So if you turn to the next page. So here's a breakdown of what that looks like for the, uh, revenues and the expenses. So if you look at the first bucket of numbers, that's the local revenue. And the earned income actually came in about 475,000 over what we had budgeted. Business privilege was actually down by 415,000. Real estate taxes were in, uh, over budget by 172, and that includes any delinquent taxes we collected. Investment interest was down by 215,000. That's due to the rates had dropped since, um, since what we had projected earlier in the budget. Um, the IDEA revenue was also down by about 35,000. And payment in lieu of taxes, uh, was up, uh, almost 450,000. So overall, our local, uh, revenues were up by almost 320,000. The next, um, bucket of numbers is the state and we are actually higher than the budget by almost 1.1 million dollars. And that is, if you looked at, like, the first four, that, that is our, uh, subsidies we received from this state. Basic ed was only up about 28,000. Adequacy subsidy, we didn't, we weren't sure we were actually gonna receive this money, so I didn't budget. I tried to budget more conservatively, but then we actually ended up receiving about 490,000 of extra dollars from the state. Vocational ed, same thing. We were, uh, we went, we had quite a hike between 23-24 and 24-25, which is, which is great. We, we won't see those hikes quite like that for vocation, uh, for, uh, vocational ed. They're kind of, uh, uh, kind of, uh, deadlining out, I guess. Special ed, we saw, uh, about a $72,000 increase. Transportation subsidy, and I think we're gonna see this too, as a downward trend. What's happening is the, the price of fuel is going up.
Hmm.
And so that's, the, the formula hasn't changed to, uh, to regulate that kind of impact that the, the increase of fuel taxes is having on it. So I think we're gonna continue to see, uh, less and less money for the transportation subsidy. And then we had a few other subsidies, um, that were increased for about 141. Okay, so that, if you add those together, that's about the 1.1 million dollar increase in your state. And then title, again, we, we budget conservatively, but we ended up getting about 184,000 additional in title money. Questions on that slide? So that's your 1.6 over budgeted revenues. The next slide. Again, we'll take a deeper dive into the expenses actual to budget. If you take the first two, that's your cyber charter. And remember that the, it was about 4.4 over budget expenses were. If you take the first two numbers, that's your cyber charter, that's 3.6 of it. That is money that we did not predict. The cyber charter, um, tuition rates are just increasing. Um, there is no good reform and not even this current state budget has adequate revisions for us, for any of the school districts. There's some relief, but not a whole lot. Um, from 23-24, so two years ago, to 24-25, we saw an increase of about eight and a half percent for regular ed and 12% for special ed over the tuition rates. For 25-20, 24-25, compare it to our concurrent year, we saw an 11% increase in regular ed and a seven and a half percent increase in special ed equating to this 3.6 million dollars over budget. The rest of the expenses, the bond source for teachers, your, um, the APS, which is approved private schools, um, that we received subsidy for, but again, we were under budget for that. Um, the insurance for Liberty Curtain. Transportation, transportation aids were over budget. They are driven by our IEPs. So if an IEP requests that we have a transportation aid, then we need to, um, that's mandatory. We need to make that happen. Um, and then our telephone and maintenance and supplies. The maintenance and supplies is actually electric. Our electric, uh, rates increased um, by about 90K. We saw a, an overage of that. Um, just a kind of side note, Sam and I just secured, uh, another, um, electric and gas rates contract and we should see a savings. I don't think it's going to be substantial, but I hope it's near that 90K rate that we, we see in, um, actual cost avoidance. So if you would take, like I said, you take the first two and that's your 3.6 million out of that 4.4. The rest of the numbers that we kind of had more control over, not so much electricity, but that only equals 800,000. So if you would take the mandatory cyber charter, the 3.6 out and only focus on the 800,000 of what we were really over, that's like a 0.9% difference between what was budgeted and what was actual. So I just wanted to kind of point that out, that a lot of this, 90% of it sits with the cyber charter. And then I wanted to also mention that we did do two capital fund transfers. One was out of Fund 30, or two Fund 39 for Liberty Curtain. That was part of that 1.7 million that the board approved for Liberty Curtain expenses. So there's the 1 million of it. And then we did a lot of, uh, capital projects. Um, I think there was two batches of, I know one was 1.3, I think one was 1.81 or something like that. Uh, we did tennis court here up at Bucktail and at Central Mountain, and we did two very large HVAC, much needed capital projects. I was glad to see the board approve those kind of capital projects happening. But I wanted to let you know that, that directly comes out of our fund balance. So, um, just wanted to, to show you those, those as well. So then if you go to the next page, this is our, um, it's actually our actual, it was predicted at the time, but actual general fund balance. So 23-24 is pretty much set in stone. We weren't sure we were gonna end in 24-25. But as you see, um, we went from 19 million to 14 million. One of the most important numbers on here is that unassigned fund balance, the one that has a percentage next to it. A healthy fund balance with the unassigned is somewhere around 7 and 8%. Well, we dropped from 8.7 to 3.5. And what I want to point out too is if you add the 3.6 million back in that we did not predict for charter school and cyber school increase, such a hefty increase, if you add that number back into that unassigned fund balance, we're at 7.5%. So again, we're, our, our our decrease is majority from cyber charter increases. So that was 24, 25. You go down to 25, 26, and again, you'll see, um, where we think we may end up this year. I'm, I'm hoping that we I'm, I'm hoping that we, we are definitely looking at our expenses and what we're spending now. We're actually down. For December, went through six months, we are at maybe thirty-five percent of expenses, and last year we were about fifty. So, yeah, we were about halfway through, um, so we are really narrowing down and making sure we are, are cognizant of the expenses going through. So I'm hopeful for that. Um, another note of that, though, is we did not, we have not paid, uh, a lot of the cyber charter school bills yet. We, um, did not pay that because, uh, we did not receive the money from PDE, so then we did not hand it, you give it to the charter schools. So now you're gonna see that money now being released. Um, what is holding it up, though, is, um, PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, is, uh, reforming the forms. It's called PDE three sixty-three, which is the charter school form. Anyway, they are doing a revised one. They did allow for sixty percent of your maintenance expenses and sixty percent of your student activities like athletics to, um, be deducted from your budgeted amount that is used in the calculation for cyber charter tuition rates. That will be helpful to some, to somewhat. I don't think we're gonna see a hefty savings. We're not going to see three million dollars. Um, but we are hopeful again that reform is, will continue to happen in that area. Um, the next page is pretty much just questions. Um, I did wanna make a note that that further down on the agenda is the, uh, Act One Resolution. And, uh, we're asking that you, um, approve the Act One Resolution, which says that we will not, as a school board, exceed the Acts One Index, which is three and a half percent this year. Um, we actually are not allowed to exceed it because we received adequacy money. So our school district as a whole, um, is not permitted to raise it above. So, um, we're asking you just to approve that Act One Index to not, um, tax over that three point five percent. So that's further on down the agenda. The auditors will be here, um, or they might not be here, but they will do a presentation, um, in January. And the numbers, um, are solid with what I have presented today. Um, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. So the audit is completed and done. Um, the annual financial report for twenty-four, twenty-five was also submitted and approved as well. So twenty-four, twenty-five is kind of looking behind us. What we wanna focus is, this year, our current year, wh- which we're in, again, we are trying diligently to look at our expenses. And then we are already into kickstarting twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So any questions here? If you have any, and you, if you don't know today, but wanna email me later, that's fine too.
Does, uh, Joanie, this fund balance, you've talked about this before, and I can't remember. Does this in any way factor into that magic formula? About how we get, you know, whether we get money or don't get money from the state?
No, that, that has no bearing. This is, this is our school district fund balance, um, that we maintain. It's, I, I wanna call it a savings account of some sort. You see how it's broken down here, and I didn't go into great detail, but it's broke, broken down by, um, in different buckets. This is the, the capital projects. This is where we put that committed money for Liberty Curtain, of that one point seven that we committed. We take it out of unassigned because as the board, you approve to commit that money. Um, we set some money aside for Peasers and, um, health insurance, technology. Um, we also have assigned fund balance. That is for any of our, um, I wanna say lawsuits or trust money back for any, uh, law implications that we have to, or we are obligated to pay for any kind of students. We have to assign that money. We have to commit that money and assign it. So this is really just our fund balance. And like I said, the number we wanna be mindful of is that unassigned fund balance.
And would you please show that page again?
Yep, that one.
Yeah. Again, this, this percentage is quoted here. This was eight point seven, and we're going down to three point three. That's of the total budget. Is that what that, what's it a percentage of?
So the three point oh six nine is a percentage of the budget, up above the eighty-eight.
Okay.
And it wasn't, like I said, healthy is somewhere between seven and eight.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for Joanie?
Okay.
Yes, Chris.
Is there any way that on the second page, your prior year financial picture?
Uh huh.
Uh, is there any way you can put the twenty-three, twenty-four budget in there also? Just because I'd like to compare it and see where we've been and where we're going to. Because on the new one, here, the predicted fund balances, you have twenty-three and twenty-four, but it's all for different items.
Sure.
If you could just throw that one column in, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that's.
So you wanna see consistency, if I'm, I'm so, so sorry, Chris, you, I mean.
No, just, I'd like to see it so we can see where we were and where we're headed and what's changing. That's all.
Would you like that? Oh, yes, I could do that.
Cause it, the four new people could see all that also, instead of just seeing what happened last year. They could see the year before, and then they can look at where it's been coming and how it's been going.
If there's any kind of trend or what we'll see. Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if I'm to understand correct, page two, there's gonna be two additional columns, so it's compatible, consistent with page five. You're gonna see twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Is that what you?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's consistent with, okay.
Yeah, it's because both pages have different categories.
Okay.
And we need to be able to look at the whole thing.
So that, just so we're clear, the first page is just, yes, page two, sorry. Page two is just showing your actual and your budgeted.
Right.
So that's just revenue and expenses.
Yeah.
The fund balance, the back page is not revenue and expenses, it's just cash.
Right.
Okay, just, but you wanna see the.
Just the twenty-three and twenty-four on there with it, that's all.
And twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Still the other question. Um, would the finance committee like to see this report? So they can go deeper and maybe get definitions or anything. I mean, that's an option that you folks have. If you would like that, so I just wanna make you aware of that. Um.
I think once you committees are assigned, I think it should actually, I know Joanie will give a presentation to finance. But finance is actually a committee of the whole at this point in time.
Right.
So all of us can come to it.
Okay.
So if she changes that, maybe she could give a short discussion in the finance committee to explain it to the new four, where we've been and where we're at, and what, why it looks like it does.
And typically, the finance committee, uh, meets at the end of the month, and they will see the presentation that will go before the board for the following meeting.
Right.
So if there are any questions like that or recommendations like that, we would have time to get them on.
That way we can kind of work towards getting everybody on the same page.
Sure.
So I'd like to make that recommendation, we do that.
Okay, noted, very good. And then I had a question on page three, please. With a revenue, um, actual to budget. Um, this would be very interesting too, and I, so please clarify for me, Chris. When you're looking at those numbers, the twenty-twenty-three, that you're also talking about this page too, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. That would be lovely.
That was gonna be next.
Okay. All right.
You wanna see the revenues broken down like this for twenty?
Uh.
Page three.
It's twenty-four, twenty-five. Let's do, add twenty-six and twenty-seven to it. Or we can't, can we?
No, we're, we're in, no.
Yeah, we can't do that.
This is just, we're, this is like, what this report does is it gives you a snapshot of last year, what we just finished. This really isn't, this report is just, like I said, it's an end of the year presentation for your previous year. It's really not so much a forecast, in that sense, yeah.
Leave it alone.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
No problem.
Anything else? Okay, thank you so much, Joanie. Deeply appreciated.
I think I'm up next as well.
Yeah. In the seat. Okay, item number B two, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven budget timeline. Um, the administration is requesting that the school board review the budget timeline as presented. There is an attachment. This timeline outlines key dates, requirements, and milestones for the development review and adoption of the district's annual budget for fiscal year coming up twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, Joanie McIntyre, you have the floor, please.
Okay. Uh, this is a snapshot of what the timelines for developing a balanced budget would look like for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Like I said, um, the, the business department lives in three years, almost every day. When we're doing the audit, when we are doing these kind of presentations, it's December, but we're still in twenty-four, twenty-five. Just making sure, completing the, the audit and completing the, the numbers, uh, to see where we landed. We currently, we live in the current year, just everyday, day-to-day operations. And we also, come November, we start living in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So we need to project out what that year is gonna look like. So we're constantly in, in three different years. So this gives you, um, like I said, a timeline, so December fourth, and now it would be the eleventh. Um, the, uh, we are asking the board to approve the resolution not to increase the Act One Index, uh, of three point five percent. Then in, it jumps ahead, we, I will give you, uh, in January, February, we can give you some kind of high level budget, but now we're starting to really crunch the numbers. Um, I have already sent out the department heads and the building principals' budgets to them. They create their own budgets. They, they start at zero. It's a zero-based budgeting, uh, process. They start at zero, and they will fill in their budgets and then submit them on January fifth, when they, when we come back from, from vacation. So, um, that's the first start of it. I'm also, um, starting to work through the wages and benefits portion of it. You know, how much, how much do we think our, uh, medical will go up next year, our, our vision, our dental, um, and so forth. And then part of the collective bargaining agreements for every group, support, you know, Act Ninety-three, teachers, the ACE contracts. Um, that's pretty set in stone. For their contracts, they're going to have a three percent increase, for example. So I build that into the budgets as well for next year. So then by March, I will come to the board, um, with a preview of a general fund budget. Um, here we will discuss, uh, possible tax increases and give me some kind of direction to look in. I can give you a high level of where the, the budget sits as far as revenue and expenses. Um, we are primarily revenue-driven. You, you only receive as much revenue as the state will give you, subsidies and real estate tax, um, and then your other local, um, revenue as well. We receive very little from the federal government, title funds and so forth, but very little. Um, and then in April, uh, again, it'll, you're, you're getting another look at the budget, um, again, giving me some direction. We will post for public inspection on April ninth. And then in May, in May, I will come to you with a budget. And that's the, that's the proposed final budget. So you'll, you'll look at that and you'll approve it. You'll have a very good idea by then where, where we're, where we'll be. And, uh, approve that the pro-pro final budget. More than likely, your June eighteenth final budget will look pretty much like your May fourteenth proposed final budget. And so that is on target for June eighteenth of twenty-twenty-six. We have, um, we have told you the mid-July to actually upload it to PDE, but I always have it uploaded right after the, the voting session on the, the eighteenth. So any questions on the timeline?
Yes.
I've spoken of this a few times over the last two years. Instead of doing one huge budget, I would like to see a budget for each individual school. Reason being is when you have a business, you can look at where your expenses are going by which school. Not just one huge budget, or we don't know where funds are going. And I would ask that, because it's starting right now, today, we do a budget for each individual school. So that we can see where the ups are, where the downs are. And we can fine-tune the amount of money that we are going through a little easier. Because going through the bills for payment every month, you all know, I'm hard on it every month. And it'd be a lot easier if we could look at it per school versus three pages of Amazon purchases and not knowing where anything's going. If you run a, a business and multiple businesses, each business has its own budget. And even though we're one district, each school needs to operate within its budget guidelines. For us to say that we have, well, we're ninety-two million in, and uh, long as we're not going over the ninety-two million, we're all right. We need to make each school responsible for what they're doing.
They, they currently are. They each have a building budget.
We've never seen a, a budget for each independent school.
Um.
So if you already have it, it'll be easy for us to prove a budget for each school.
So the, the way that, uh, so we do ask the, for the supplies and materials budget for school is separated out, and, and Joanie keeps track of that throughout the year. Uh, the way that it's reported, um, is categorized differently. And so they'd have to do a lot of work in reforming, uh, uh, because of the way the, all of the account codes and all of that work, it's, it lumps together differently than by school. So they, their, their team would have to do some work to try to separate it out that way.
That's what they get paid for. We need, I understand you're saying it's gonna be some work, but if we're already doing part of it, each business, we should see a budget. And for expenses for that school, uh, what they're gonna need in the future. Instead of doing it all in one time where anybody can move anything around, it just makes it cleaner.
Okay, we can work on that.
Well, it's up to the board to decide if that's what they wanna see.
Yes, sir.
I think that I think that a, a, a policy of that sort would be, um, over-managing from our, from where we are. We're supposed to be making policies, and there should be one general budget. We are not, this board is not the CFO or the CEO of this organization. Um, Dr. Redman and Ms. McIntyre are responsible for that. And I think that, um, if we were to do that, we're creating a lot of extra work, and I'm not sure we're gonna do as good a job as they are.
Are you finished, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the way comments work for Robert's rules is everyone is allowed to speak once first. And then the original speaker then is allowed to speak again. So we've had two people speak on this. Is there any other comments or concerns that you have heard that you would like to talk on?
I do.
Yes, please.
Cause that's one thing that I keep hearing from the Renova residents, is that how other schools get more money than they do. And if there is a report to say, this is what you're getting, this is what they're getting, that would kind of nip that in the bud. Because that's all I've been hearing from them, is how other schools get more money than they do and get more things than they do. Whereas if it's in a sheet where they, here you go, that's what they're getting, I think that would nip that discussion from them in the bud.
Okay, thank you, Mary. You done? Do thank you. Yes, Johnny, on the floor.
I think if they broke it down to where it was each school individual, each school could be more held, more accountable.
Hmm.
Instead of just an open, an open budget for everybody, just to stick their hands in, you don't have accountability for anybody individually.
Interesting question. You done, John? Yeah?
Oh, I'm sweating.
You done?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, other comments, please? Yes, please, Mr. Rodriguez.
Not to keep beating a dead horse, but I do agree that there has to be a little bit more clarification on where the money's going and how it's being spent, and by who's being spent, and it being broken down. That way we, we understand it a little better. And honestly, I feel like that would clarify questions on either side. It doesn't matter, you know, just clarify questions everywhere. That'll help people understand, you know, if they're mad about something, they can understand why. You know, that's how it goes. So I, I think it'll just help all around, really. It'll take a little bit more, more, more work, and I, I get that, but I think it'll help it run a little smoother.
So I just want to make sure you're all aware. We do break it down by building, and the building and the departments out of this budget of ninety-two million dollars equals about five hundred thousand dollars. That's really the money that's in the buildings and the departments. I mean, we have no problem doing that. I just want you to know, that's five hundred thousand dollars out of the ninety-two million that's in our budget. I mean, we have no problem doing that, I just want you to know, that's five hundred thousand dollars out of the ninety-two million that's in our budget. I just want you to make, be clear that that work is being put into five hundred thousand dollars. Versus the ninety-two million overall budget. We have it broken down by school and they are, they do stick to their budgets. Their, their principals and the department heads are, are diligent about sticking to their budgets. The majority of the money, um, is in salaries and wages and cyber charter. Those types of expenses are your bigger expenses. Um, so I just want to make you aware, that's, that's what you're, that's what you're looking at. I, I, so I don't want you to think you're going to save a five hundred thousand dollars by looking into a budget. I just want you to realize the budgets are, some of the school budgets are thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, you know, Renovo and, and the other smaller schools, Liberty Curtain, might be seventeen thousand dollars. So I just want you to be aware that that's kind of the budget you're looking at, that you'll be looking through.
Okay, thank you. All right, so any other comments before we start going back through the table? Please. Okay, um, I have a quick comment. I, I understand what you're saying, like you have budget to, uh, for expenditures, that unforeseen, that's that five hundred thousand dollars. Well, I think.
That's not unforeseen, that is their budget.
Well, I mean, yes.
For all of the schools and all the departments together.
Okay.
Not, that's what they planned on.
Okay. Thank you.
Just.
Okay, well. I think, and I'm gonna turn it over and ask my question to Chris. Chris, are you, when you, when your vision is of the school building. Are you looking at salaries, insurance, um, everything? Or what exactly, when you look at the building, what, if you could help clarify what those categories may or may not be that you want to use as an evaluation tool?
What I would like to see, and Jody just answered it, they already have it broke down by the school. So there's no reason we can't see what each individual school's budget is. We should know how much Woodward School costs this year. We should know how much Rob, how much all the other schools, even Bucktail, all that. We should know what each school costs, we should see where they say this is what we need to operate for this year. That should be their budget. And if they fall out of line with their budget, then we can say, what happened? We can ask questions, why? We, I understand what Bill said, it's not micromanaging. It's being fiscally responsible, which is what this board is. We're responsible to where that ninety-two million goes. We've all had discussions, everybody in here is tired of me chewing up the bills for payment, wondering what this is and that is. And where it's going. I've asked you how many times, so where's this going, where's that going? If we see it's for that school, then we know where it went. I won't have to ask all those questions and be so critical. But when you operate a business, when I had my businesses, I didn't operate out of one cash register. Each business operated its own. That's all I'm asking. If you already have it done. Uh, we can see it.
So just to clarify though, the principals and department heads are not responsible for wages and benefits. They are responsible for office supplies and those types of things, just, just to clarify.
We just want to know what each school is costing us, what is their budget?
Right.
I understand that wages and salaries and insurance all come out of one kitty. I want to see the rest of it.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
So it's up to the board.
Okay, other, other comments, please?
Yeah, I just. I know the, I know what Jody's trying to say. These, these building budgets are. Really pretty lean when you talk, start talking about what they, what the principals actually can spend. They have very little money that they actually spend throughout the course of the school year. Because everything else, there's line items in, in every budget for materials, for, for books, for all kinds of things. That they budget before the year, when they have to turn in their, whatever their needs are, back in the spring. When Dr. Redman and, and his team sits down with them and he tells them he wants a zero-based budget. They have to put it as, make it as lean as possible. And all you're gonna see, you can pull those bu, the, the budgets for each school out and look at it and you're gonna see. The principal might have a small account for, for whatever that they need to use, uh, for a day, you know. Day-to-day operation, but you're not going to see thousands and thousands of dollars in there. Joanie just told you five hundred thousand dollars for the entire district at the building level. So it's just, it's just, I mean, you can look at it, but that's not where the money is. That's not where the district is. And again, I agree with Bill, and I've said this many times before. We are not to micromanage the school district. That is what we pay these folks to do. It's Joanie's job, it's Dr. Redman's job, they are there. To make sure that we are spending the money as fiscally responsible and efficiently as possible. You can look at every building budget if you want, but you're not going to see much there, other than for materials and so on.
Hey, are you finished, Joe?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? Um, yes, Chris?
It's not micromanaging, it's being fiscally responsible, knowing what we're spending. We spend all this money on Amazon candy, what schools are they going to? Amazon toys, what are they going to? It's not micromanaging, it's being fiscally responsible to look at each different school's budget. It's not rocket science. And if she's already doing it, we could see it. And if the school has a problem and they go way over budget, we can ask why. Right now, all we get is, well, this broke. We need to know how it's being managed. And it's not micromanaging, it's just being responsible to the taxpayers.
Okay.
And doing the best for the kids that we can.
Okay. Is there any other comments, discussion? I'd like to make a closing comment, please. Um, Joanie, thank you, and I'm the team that works with you. Um. I think this might be a way to view this, and then correct me, folks, if I'm wrong. Possibly at the next finance committee meeting, come to the board who shows at the finance committee meeting. With some of the concepts that you've heard tonight, and then let the committee. Work on that, and then you can help guide them. Would that sound like a reasonable compromise here?
Mm-hmm. Bring it to the finance meeting and let us look.
Okay, so January. Yeah? All right, super terrific, thank you very much. Okay, thank you for your patience, folks. We are now on C one, hearing of visitors. Um, visitors wishing to address the board on topics. We highly encourage it with the understanding that our policy does have a time limit. Of four minutes. And we cannot have dialogue. But what I will promise you is this, as president, I will, if you so choose, take your name, phone number, email, however you prefer. And if you want to have a discussion with me or call me, or I'll call you, I am more than happy to do that. Do we have any visitors signed up? Okay, thank you. D one, Dr. Redman Superintendent's report, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, I want to be, uh, real quick, again, thank you to our new board members and congratulations on being seated on the board. Uh, and I want to turn your attention to some, uh, student things that are happening. Uh, we're in the holiday season and starting next Monday, every day of the week. And then the following week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there are concerts happening at our various elementary schools and high school and middle school. Uh, Renova, Bucktail, so there's lots of Christmas concerts going on, holiday concerts going on. If you want to get involved, we can get you connected with our, uh, with the district calendar, or you can look there yourself. Uh, excuse me, I encourage board members to attend these. It's great for the, the students and staff to see you participating and supporting the work that's happening in the schools.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I have a request from a board member who would like to take a short recess to use the facilities. Um, is that okay? So we're gonna take a short recess and please feel free, and we will be back in a few minutes. Recession starts right now, thank you. Good evening, we'd like to restart the meeting, please, from the recess at eight oh nine.
Are you back on?
It's recording, mm-hmm, yes.
You on?
Yes, please.
Yep, I, I have to leave because of other engagements that's, it's been a long day.
Okay, no problem, Tom, thank you for coming.
See you, Tom.
And we look forward to seeing you soon.
Yep.
All right, you have a safety meeting. Okay, the agenda, um, E one, policy committee. Is there any committee reports from the policy committee chair, Chris?
Uh, no.
Okay.
You're an E one?
E one.
Oh, policy committee, yes.
Okay.
On that one, uh, we moved and had a special policy meeting for all the public and for everybody. On the PTOs. Uh, I think we had a really good turnout. We got some different aspects of athletic groups, boosters and other groups from PTOs to come in. Uh, we had a good dialogue, a lot of communication. And some of the groups had said that they're asking for things and they don't get a response. Uh, so we're getting everybody lined up with a new financial page. Uh, they're working on their bylaws, some of the schools are, or yeah, some of the PTOs, their bylaws were actually from the nineties. So we're working with everybody to get everybody on the same exact page, so they all know what they're doing. And if need be, they can help each other. We can be up to date on what they're doing and I think it was a very good meeting. Dr. Redman, what do you think?
No, I agree, I, I think it's very helpful, um, and we're still working through, working with the, the PTOs to try to get some of the information. But yeah, I think it was, it was good, it'll take some time to get, uh, all of them together.
So we'll, we'll be bringing that, uh, policy back up when we have a good set of rules and what we're doing for.
Okay, that's very encouraging. Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, F one, the treasurer's report. The treasurer's report is presented for October twenty twenty five, there's an attachment. And, um, Joanie, at some point, the business manager, I'm sorry, the school board treasurer. Excuse me, Joanie McIntyre, um, during a finance committee meeting, if anyone has any questions. To go a little deeper on all of these, please feel free. But if you want to ask any questions right now, obviously you have every opportunity to have a voice. Is there any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay. Uh, F two, financial reports. Um, these are three reports that the business manager, uh, provides to us. The first one shows the general fund and the percentage that's left, there's revenue. Second attachment, I'm sorry, that was a summary, the second one is the revenue page. Um. It's a general ledger, elementary supplement report. This is a new report, fairly new, they've changed over their software, that can be explained. This is a new report, fairly new. They've changed over their software. That can be explained at a Finance Committee meeting if you so choose. One, uh, it's still in under development. Is there any particular questions right here before I, I make a comment, please? No? Okay. Um, one thing we've been talking about, and this can come up in a Finance Committee meeting possibly, is to always compare this year to last year's for a column. Thank you. Uh, last one is October twenty twenty five. This, again, this is new software, newish software. This is evolving. Um, this again can come up in a Finance Committee meeting to go into more details. Do we have any discussion items on this, please? Hearing none, I'd like to offer the same comment I've made. Um, that there be another line, column, that shows last year and also a breakdown of retiree benefits for health insurance versus currently employed. That can be discussed if they so choose at a Finance Committee meeting. Next, F three, Enrollment Report. This is a monthly report that we get, and we're very fortunate that over the years, we've added last year's, and then recently, we added five years ago, so we can evaluate trends. Is there any questions on the monthly Enrollment Report, please, dated November twentieth? Any comments? No? Thank you. Cool. Okay. Next one, F four, Administrative Regulations and BOGS.
Yeah, let me explain that.
Yes, please, Chair of the Policy Committee. Thank you.
What this is, and you folks will get into this later on, we have set policies, and then we have admini- administrative regulations, and we call them ARs for short. Those are how Dr. Redman is going to write the AR to make sure that the policy is followed by the right people. Uh, so he kind of writes his, this is how I want to do to enact this certain policy. And then we look over it, and if it's good to go, we, we get it going. A BOG is a Board Operating Guideline. And that just gives us some directions, how to adhere to a policy without it being a policy. It gives us guidelines that we should stay in, like driving down the road, you want to stay inside the guardrails. And that helps protect the board on what we can and can't do. And, uh, you'll see here, we have, uh, two ARs and one BOG that we put up, and we do what they call first read, which we can bring them to the board after the Policy Committee goes over them. We bring them to the board. They, uh, look at them. If there's any questions or things they should change, we can look at it, and then we get sometimes legal advice, you name it. And, uh, then it comes back for a second read and hopefully passed. So that's what they are.
Thank you. That was well done.
We'll work with all you guys through, when we do a board orientation and stuff, we'll walk you through all this stuff.
Mm-hmm. That was very good. Thank you. Yes, that'll, that'll be happening at a board retreat. We'll be talking about policies. Okay, well, there's three here. Um, the zero zero four BOG dash two. And I also wanted to thank, let you know that anything you see in yellow highlighting, we, it's very helpful. That lets you know, uh,
That's what we're changing.
Yep, what has been taken, what is recommended to be taken out by the Policy Committee, and the yellow is what's recommended to be in place of the text. And the other one, uh, did you want to talk about any of these?
Well, if anybody, since you folks just got your stuff tonight, if you guys want to look through it throughout the week, ask any questions, uh, just give me a shout or let me know, or you can ask the whole board a question on email. Uh, that's really all it is.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I may add one more comment. Um, you'll, this will be explained to you later, but just so you know, we don't make up these policies. They are vetted through the Pennsylvania Association of School Board Members who have lawyers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the Policy Committee gets their policies from PSBA, and then the Policy Committee distills it with administration. And we still have the power, though, to, within the law, to make a policy however we want to make it to be. Okay, so that's enough for right then. That's okay? Thank you so much. All right. Uh, moving on to G one, Resolution one sixty not to exceed the index. This is what, um, Joni McIntyre, Business Manager, expressed. This is something annually every school board does. Um, and this will come up for a vote. Basically, you're saying I'm not going to go above what this data allows us to go above, which is some three point some percent or whatever it is. I'm just saying.
Three point five percent.
Thank you, thank you. Three point, thank, thank you for the clarification. Um, any questions on that? Okay, moving forward, G two, Staffing. Um, there are two attachments in here with a company called, help me if I pronounce this incorrectly, please, sir, DevaPOR?
Yeah, De- DevaPAR.
DevaPAR. Okay. Um, there's two attachments here, a master agreement for consulting services, and there's also another attachment. The, the Keystone Central School District Scope of Work. This was an administrative directive given by the board to the superintendent to look at potential staffing, et cetera. Dr. Redman, would you please add something?
Uh, sure, yes. As you, uh, mentioned, uh, Ms. Lynch, the, we're looking at, uh, any changes that we mean, we may need to make in staffing because we've seen about a four hundred fifty student decline over the last five years. And so, one of our considerations was to have an outside agency come in and have an unbiased look across, uh, all of our work functions to make sure that we are right-sized, um, based on that change in student enrollment. Uh, so this was a company that, uh, came highly recommended, uh, and, um, the, the price was, uh, I think, pretty good. I, I think the, the work that they, uh, say that they're going to do, and the references that I've seen, uh, on this, uh, I think this is a, a really good opportunity for us to get, uh, an outside agency to give us a really strong recommendation for any potential staffing changes based on that reduction in student population.
All right, questions around the board? Oh, yes, please.
This outside agency, what's its cost?
Uh, as it's, um, says, says that right there, it's the cost is not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
And this outside agency, they're going to do something that our in-house administration can't do?
They will be able to do it without any question or concern of bias or, uh, favoritism or anything like that. That's something that the board discussed in our last meeting, is to have someone who can, who can have that kind of outside viewpoint so that the, the board and the community can rest assured that the recommendation is coming from someone who doesn't have a vested interest in any particular outcome.
All right, I, I personally, I just feel instead of spending more money, that could be done in-house.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know whose job it would be, but just say, it's your job, just for sake. If you can't do your job without bias, there's an issue. And then we, as a board, have to trust what you say. But instead of just throwing more money out the door. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Comments, Ms.? Yes, Chris, you have the floor.
Uh, you've got one company here to do this. Was there an RFP out so we could compare with some other companies?
Uh, we weren't able to get any others to respond in time. Uh, so we did, I talked to a couple of others. Um, there's not a lot of folks who do this, uh, and I'm still waiting on one other, but I don't anticipate that they're going to come in with less. And it, during our conversation, that other group would not provide a recommendation. They would just describe what the situation is and compare us to other school districts.
Because when we voted on it last month, I thought you were going to do the comparison with, like John said, in-house with your staff. Uh, I didn't know we were going to go to an outside company, but if we're going to spend twelve thousand dollars, I think we should seriously look at getting another, something to compare it to.
Everything else, I guarantee everything else is going to be more, but if you want me to keep looking, I'll keep looking.
Well, I'm just, I was just curious, because in the past, we, oh, this is all there is, and it's not so.
We're also running into a timing issue, uh, because in, in order for us to be able to provide the recommendation for the board in time for us to make a move so that if there is a reduction in staff, the folks who are leaving will have time, time to seek other jobs.
Mm-hmm.
If we delay any further than this, then we're running up against that ability for staff to find appropriate employment in other districts.
Is the Personnel Committee going to be involved in this, too?
Uh, that, we're in this.
Once we put it together?
Oh, sure, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, we can just, yeah, other comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Bill.
Please. Dr. Redman and I went to a presentation by this group at the, uh, state School Board Meeting. When was it? September or October? I don't remember. It was impressive. Um, their fee is modest. The, um, they presented some things at the meeting, and, um, a superintendent from another district spoke about how much they saved, and the, the savings exceeded the cost of the investigation. Um, I think this is a smart way to go. It gives, if nothing else, it gives a fresh set of eyes. You can get used to, this is the way we do it. And we could be in that situation here. You can be in that situation anywhere, but we could, you know, and a, a fresh set of eyes, I think, is a, is a good idea. Uh, I would say, too, that this one's oriented towards staffing. We, we definitely have to look at our staffing situation. We've lost almost twelve percent of our population. But I think that it might not be a bad idea if they're willing to do it, or if, I was going to say we could look to somebody else for another one, but apparently there isn't anybody else there. See if, and I, I think it might be important to maintain it as two separate investigations, but just look at the total scope of what we're doing and see, do you see anywhere where we're wasting money, where we can, we can be more efficient? And that, and that's what I would favor, is a dual-pronged approach to this. We need to come, you know, we need to, we need to figure out how to save as much money as we can save because we're in trouble, and, uh, I think this might help. And for, you know, for eleven thousand dollars, it's worth the investment, in my opinion.
Are you finished, Bill?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Other comments before we go back to the original speakers? Any other comments? The first speakers, go ahead, please.
Um, just to be clear, I am not in favor of spending the money to do it. But with that being said, you can't just look at like, oh, there's the cheapest one out there. Let's go jump on it. You got to have something to compare it to. And you can't, you say, oh, they come with good recommendation. Well, that could have been that school person's brother, just getting him the business, and you got to have something there to compare to. If this guy's twelve thousand, this guy's twenty thousand, there's a reason. I mean, I don't want to spend the money, but if that's the route that the board votes on, we got to do it the smart way about it. Can't just jump in and grab the smallest fish in the tank. I'm done.
Thank you, John. Um, any other comments? Okay, hearing, hearing your voices, this is sort of a compromise I'd like you to consider, please. Um, Dr. Redman, I heard what you had to say, in all fairness to the staff, but I'll be honest with you. I heard what the board said, and I think this might be an option. Let's get representative from this company to come and give a presentation to the board, number one. And number two, if it's absolutely impossible to find any other consulting firm that will work with us or is available to work with us, if that's a fact, then we're going to have to live with it. So, it sounds like the board is requesting the superintendent to dig a little deeper to get a second opinion out here. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, that's number one. Okay, please.
If you want to do that, I think we should take a vote. I, I think it'd be wasting time and effort. And, uh, to, it's, it's, Dr. Redman's already done the work, and, uh, I can assure you, Mr. Miller, it was not the guy's brother. I was there. I listened to him.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Um, so, if you, if you want to do it the way you were proposing, I think it should go up for a vote.
Okay, I don't.
Yes.
Okay.
Point of order. You can't do a vote in a work session. You're going to have to go to the next voting meeting.
Actually, may I?
Please.
We're not really doing business. We're, we're, how, how we're going to approach it, and I don't think that would be covered. We could do that. It's, whether you want to call it a consensus, a vote, or whatever. It's a matter of, do we bring this up for a vote the next time, or do we want Dr. Redman to get other people to come in or have a presentation before we decide on a vote?
Um, yes, John?
Oh, go ahead, go around.
Is, is there any more to go? Okay, John, you have the floor.
I would be, I don't oppose having a vote on. I think that would be a good idea. But like Mr. Baldino stated earlier, we're in trouble. You don't, we're in trouble because we spent too much money, so let's go out and spend more money to fix the spend too much money to begin with. But I agree with, should be up to the board. We should vote on it.
Okay. So, um, thank you. Um, Bill, so if you would like to make a motion, and is that what you would like to do?
Um, I think you should be making the motion. You wanted to, uh, have a presentation. Um, I don't think there's any need for it. I think, um, unless, okay, I move that before requiring any presentation, uh, the board vote to see if they, the majority of the board desires a presentation.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second. Motion was made to move that there be a presentation prior to the board, presentation by the company on the agenda prior to the board making an official.
That was not the motion.
Okay, please, go ahead. I'll write down.
Christine, will you take this down, please? This is for you. I move that prior to asking for a presentation, a vote be taken.
Can you slow down? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Prior to the vote being taken.
I move pri- prior to a pre- of, uh, asking for a presentation by the, what company is it, Frank?
DevaPOR.
DevaPOR. A vote be taken of the board members to see if they desire that. You got it, Christine? Why don't you read it back? Because that's what you, yeah.
Um, Dr. Baldino made a motion to, um, prior to the presentation, a, uh, by the company, DevaPOR, um, a presentation be taken. I'm so sorry.
Here, let me write it out for you.
Yeah.
Go on to something else. It's going to take me a minute.
Okay. We're going to temporarily suspend the conversation for G two. Okay. Going on to G three, uh, the draft two, twenty-six, twenty-seven district calendar. With the following recommendation resolved, the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors approved the following recommendation for the board. There is an exhibit for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. Is there any discussion? Is, is there any discussion, otherwise?
The only thing I had was we have a lot of days off between November for Thanksgiving and December. Uh, school starting back. And when they do, are we taking in consideration that a lot of families are away for the fairs and and all that stuff, cause?
This uh, the calendar creation process is via committee. So we had a, a committee with staff, students, parents, all kinda looked and helped develop this um, this calendar. And so it was that collaboration that came up with this. So it looks very similar to this year's calendar. And, and so that's how it came out. I don't remember if there's any specific discussion about fair attendance or, or anything like that. Uh, I think looking at not wanting to start too early in August, or go too late in June, kind of put the the uh, fence posts on the calendar, and then we had to figure out how to get a hundred seventy-five days in there. After you get your starting date, ending date.
Well, it's kinda weird, we're, we're taking off a lot of days for Halloween and not for Labor Day. And I was kinda curious about that, and then there's a lot of
I'm, I'm sorry, for clarification, for Halloween.
Yeah.
We just have the thirtieth off. And that's the end of a, so, one of the things in the collective bargaining agreement is at the end of every marking period, there's uh, a, a clerical day for staff to give in grades and that sort of thing.
Okay. All right, but I would just make sure that we're giving people enough time to get back from the fair before school starts. And stuff like that, and then uh, August, you have both Clinton County Fair and Center County Grange Fair. But there's a lot of the yellow circles for open house and conferences. Uh, is the fairs gonna impede on them, do you think?
I don't think so, no, because these are often, it, just open houses, it's voluntary for, for uh, folks to come if they want to.
All right, just curious. I wanted to make sure the kids in the fair weren't uh, getting shortchanged, cause it takes a lot to unpack and get home and everything else.
So any other discussion?
Mary knows, four eight.
So any other comments? Okay, if I may, um, then, um, thank you for putting this together, I'm sure it's quite a journey. But I will say this, um, one, one thing I, I do find helpful is the state college area school district's calendar. And it's presented differently. And of course, their dates are different than ours. Be that as it may, I, I bring this up every year, that um, the first Tuesday of November should be a day that our school is not open. That's the day of elections. And I think that's, would sound, uh, send a very strong message. So, be that as it may, this board has two options. They can either keep the calendar as recommended, it comes up for a vote next week. Two, they rec- they can request changes at a, a committee level. So, those are your options. Any other discussion? Okay, I'd like to go back, please, to um, item G two. And we have a motion, and Christine, since the maker handed it to you, would you be so kind as to read the motion for us, please?
Dr. Baldino made a motion that prior to requesting a presentation by the I'm sorry, I'm not sure how to pronounce.
Devopar.
Devopar. A vote be taken to determine if the board desires such a presentation.
I'm asking for a point of clarification, so the motion is that we are going to vote on this next week without a, a presentation. Is that what the motion is?
The motion is to deci- is to determine whether the entire board, not just you, wants to have a presentation.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, that's, all right, that's the motion then. The motion is whether or not the board would like a presentation. Okay. May I have, would anyone like to make the, I'll second, second?
Yep.
Any discussion?
If we want to have a presentation, it probably won't get voted on by next week.
It could, based on whatever the presentation is.
Yeah, it would be before the vote, I mean, before it comes on the agenda.
Okay, so we're not gonna look for somebody else either? Do an RFP?
The board would like, I'm still waiting on some responses.
Okay.
Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, we have a second? Any discussion? Actually, we have a second, we have a second. So, the discussion, anything else for the discussion on this particular motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Opposed?
No.
That's a recommendation for presentation.
No, that's not what, if we vote on the motion that I submitted, I think what Dr. Baldino's intention for his motion was, do we want a presentation?
Exactly.
Or not?
Yes.
I voted no, because I don't think it's necessary.
I don't, I agree, no, it's not necessary.
Yep.
So, we just voted that
I request a voice vote.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Okay, the procedure to do a revote. Please read the motion for a revote, for a voice count. By name.
You want the motion reread?
Yes, please.
Dr. Mo- Dr. Baldino made a motion that prior to the requesting a presentation by the Davapore, a vote be taken to determine if the board desires such a presentation.
Thank you.
So, now we do a roll call. If you're voting for this, it means that we have to take another vote to decide that we want a presentation. That's what it says. If we wanna modify the most, someone wants to modify it, to change it, that's fine, but so a point of clarification, so everybody's clear. If you vote no, you are saying you don't want a presentation.
Right.
If you vote yes, you are saying, yes, we want a presentation.
Right.
Yes, thank you. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Baldino?
No.
Ms. Mozart?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon? Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Kramer?
No.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
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 Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Scapp?
Yes.
One, two. Three, one, two, three, oh, three. Five members, yes, three members, no.
Five, yes, three, no, but it means we'll get a presentation. Um, will you be so kind to set that up for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, okay. Super traffic. Number G four. Real estate tax refunds, there's three attachments here. Levi, and Elma Mae Stolffus, Ricky and Anne Frankenhauser, Frank Hauser, and Kurt Snyder. Are there any questions on any of these?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Dr. Redmond, cause Noel's not here, correct? Oh, there you are. Uh, I know one of these was from the county for a reassessment was wrong. But it seems like we're refunding a lot of taxes lately, is is there a reason for it, why we're having so many, and could you kinda give us a, how they were found and explain the process? So that we can understand why there are so many going on?
So the first one, for Stolffus, the um, assessed value was incorrect. And we didn't have that information, so it came from the county, so the county's asking us to refund their money back for twenty-three and twenty-four real estate taxes. So that's for the Stolffus property, Frankenhauser. Sorry, I'm just getting reacquainted with these. The homestead credit was given to the wrong parcel. They had two parcels of land, and it was given to the wrong parcel of theirs. So it the way that the homestead credit works is it reduces your main taxes, and their tax, the homestead credit that was applied, was applied to a parcel that didn't have the full homestead credit on it. So, for example, if the homestead credit was two hundred and thirty dollars, and their property taxes were only a hundred and seventeen, they only, they only got credit for a hundred and seventeen dollars. So they didn't have to pay on that parcel. But then on their other parcel where the homestead should have been ap- uh, been applied, they had to pay the full amount. So, the homestead should have went on the other parcel, they should have had the full tax credit, so that's why we're refunding them that one.
Okay.
And then Snyder.
I understood that one, that was pretty
Did you want me to explain?
You can if you want, I understood that one, it just seemed like we're getting a lot of these all of a sudden, and if it's cause you're picking up mistakes as you're going through, congrats to you, good job.
It's a little bit of both on the assessment side and, and on the tax office side.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good job.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, item number five. Secondary school improvement plans are completed once the data from the previous school year is finalized. Secondary schools use Title II, Title IV money to support school improvement initiatives. Therefore, former school improvement plans are completed. With a recommendation of administration, resolved that the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors approved the following recommendation for the board. Approve the school improvement plan for Central Mountain High School. When you open up the attachment, there are twenty-seven pages. So, what would the board like to do? You have opportunities for questions, answers, there's a lot of information here. Discussion?
Does it tell you on there what the upgrades are? Is that a no?
I, John, who would you like to
What do you mean by upgrades? I'm just, for clarification.
She said there's twenty-seven pages here of the up, wh- what was the terminology?
It's a school improvement plan.
School improvement.
So, yeah, in here is uh, specified the areas that we're gonna concentrate on to make the improvements. So this is a, a state mandated form and format. So it's just, it's a requirement from the state to fill out this thing, because uh, we use federal money to help support, then we have to do a school improvement plan.
Thank you.
Chris?
Go ahead.
Is this something that should be run through the curriculum committee?
Uh, we would have, but the meeting didn't happen.
Okay, should we hold it so that it can?
Um, no, I think we have a timeline, we have a timeline, it's due to, to um, PDE.
Okay, could this not have been, had a curriculum committee and made sure this happened? Cause I hate to make decisions when it hasn't even gone through a committee to be discussed.
I understand, we tried to bring it to the committee and the committee didn't run.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Bill?
All right, could you just give a brief translation of this into English?
Actually, I might ask if uh,
Or Megan? I may, um, maybe I'm the only one that this is Greek to, but
It's a lot.
No, so the, um, it's called an ATS I plan because it's an attendance school improvement um, plan for Central Mountain High School. So for about the last three to four years, Central Mountain High School has been designated by the state as needing improvement for attendance for special educa- for students who receive special education services. So it's a very targeted plan for improving the attendance rates of our students who receive special education services. So based on our past data, the state said you need to improve in this area, so therefore we go through the process and we make a plan for improving the attendance for those students. So it's not a comprehensive school improvement plan. Um, you see those for elementary schools once a year. Um, this one is targeted for improving attendance. So really, when you look through um, the strategies, it's really about um, targeting um, the data and looking at our attendance rates throughout the school year and putting supports in place for students who we find aren't coming to school on a regular basis, and putting those supports into place. So it's really, um, the purpose of the plan is to put those supports in place so that kids get to school and we can improve our attendance, and therefore the academic outcomes. Cause when they're here more, obviously they just perform better academically as well.
Okay, you good, John?
Uh, anybody, high school team, have anything else to add?
John, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Yep.
Did you, Dr. Redmond, did you say we don't have time to run it through a committee?
No, we did bring it to the committee, but the committee couldn't meet because there weren't enough members who were available during the, the normal meeting time.
If we get, if we're getting federal funding, but we know this report needs put in every year, couldn't have been more than one opportunity for the board to, for the committee to meet?
I don't remember the specific circumstances, Megan, can you help with that one again?
So you have to wait for the PA future-ready data to come out, which comes out in end of November, and then this is due in December. So the state doesn't really provide a very good window of opportunity for you to take it through multiple channels. It has to essentially be very similar to year after year, um, for the timeline.
Okay, so if it comes out the end of November, starting beginning of December, we got until the end of November next year to schedule something to get the committee in there.
No, sir, we have one month.
Right.
We have one month between when that data comes out and when we have to submit.
It comes in, yeah.
It's, it's actually a little bit less than a month, we have to get that together.
Just didn't sound like the planning was very whatever there. Okay. I'm done.
Any other comments? Okay. All right, so the understanding is the data comes out in November, it has to be put into the state before the end of December? Correct? Okay, thank you, Megan. Um, this is very important, truancy is something that's been on our radar, that we, I feel that this will be the year that we'll be able to discuss it deeper. There's two things I, I noticed on here. Now this form, these are all a new initiatives, but these, these are not, pardon me, let me reword this. These are not, not all of these are new initiatives. Some of these are already in place, but they're being modified, and some of them are new. Is it possible to consider this? This is not a directive, it's for the board to consider. That anything that's new be highlighted for next week? Or anything that's been modified, and then if you have any questions, maybe target that? And the other one I didn't find in here is anything about a truancy officer. I'm not sure what the discussions were with that in this, this, this group that you had. But maybe next week. If the board would like, we could hear about. What your opinions were about the truancy officer and whether or not that would be something that would go into this report? I don't know. I'm just offering some uh options here. Or you can just leave it as is and just approve it next week. So you have options. You just have to let. Us know through a discussion right now. Is there anything the board would like or not? No discussion, then we'll just leave it as is. Pretty much. Okay. Thank you. H one, policy two oh nine point two. Uh, recommendation of administration approve the following for the board, a motion to approve policy two oh nine point two. It's been updated. And if one thing that's wonderful they do for us, whenever they change, modify, they uh either place in bold or they highlight in yellow. Would chair for the policy, please?
Yeah, this is one of the policies we're going through. And if you look at the top, John, I don't know if you can see it on hers or not. It says each policy first read. So we kinda went through it and this is what I was talking about earlier. Once it goes through first read. And everybody's good with it, then it'll come up for second read and finalization. Then it's the policy updates have been made. That's what that, that's just explaining it quickly.
That's very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Uh, we have under I all the minutes from the work session, the voting meeting. Policy committee and the special policy meeting. There's attachments there. If you have any questions on any of these or any comments. Um, please step forward.
Yeah, give them a chance to read them this week and that they can familiarize themselves with. The different committee meeting minutes that we've had.
Yep, is that okay? All right, super terrific. Moving on to J one. Checks for review, payments for approval. Um, you'll notice there's three attachments there. The Liberty Curtain. The board gave a directive that Liberty Curtain construction always be on a separate spreadsheet so we can keep track of. The developments at Liberty Curtain. The second one is December fourth, payments for approval. That page is blank. Um, Dr. Redman can explain that in just a minute, please. And then December fourth, checks for review. Uh, checks for review. What the philosophy has been is that when the board approves the budget. In May. That then they hand all the responsibility over to administration. And then administration through their needs makes monthly purchases. So that's why you see. That it's for review. We've already approved, the board approved last year that they can spend the money. So be that as it may, um. Dr. Redman, would you please, just before we get too deep? The the payments for approval, is there something that we should understand about that?
So payments for approval are those things that fall outside of the authority of. The business manager as outlined in uh policy six eleven and state law.
Hmm.
Uh, which states that uh all purchases within budgetary limits may be made upon the authorization of the business manager. So anything that would fall outside of that would come to the board as a payment for approval.
Okay.
For this month, there is nothing that falls outside of uh of of those limits as established in policy six eleven and state law. So there's nothing on the bills for or the payments for approval.
Okay, so we can just, we'll just leave that on the agenda at all times and then if there is, okay, thank you. That helps clarify it. All right, folks. It's your time for questions and discussion on the other items. A hearing none, we'll move on. Um, J two. Verkadia Guest is a simple and secure way to screen, track and manage visitors built within the Ver. Verkata command, command platform. Guest offers an intuitive user interface, customizable settings and geek cameras and access control and terror. Integration to protect everyone on the premises. The system is able to be purchased with PCCD money. We'll need a clarification for the acronym, please, that has. To be used for safety and security specifically. This money has to be spent before June, of which we're assuming twenty twenty-six. The leftover money will allow us to make sure every school and the tax office. Entrance to have a system to monitor all visitors. Here is a link to the product with the attachment. Okay, who would like to discuss uh? Bring us up to date on this, please. Thank you.
Uh. Dr. Zangara has been doing all the groundwork on this. Cuz we're looking at updating our security system because it is just. Deep funk. It can't get parts for it. A lot of stuff we can't fix. This. He got a grant for the PCCD. And that's what this is for. This is to update all the door entries and stuff and we've been. Working on this for what? A year? So I'll let Dr. Zangara tell you what he's doing cuz he's done it with the grant. But this is something that you guys are gonna need to know for stepping forward.
Yeah, so like what Chris said, so this is grant money. So this doesn't come out of the general fund at all. So this is money that I wrote for. I think it was last year and it has to be on sa- spent on safety and security. If not, you have to send the money back to the state. So as we were going through to see what we could actually do to increase safety and security in schools. Um, we looked at this Verkata guest system. Um, a a number of school districts around us have Verkata as their. Their guest access, their camera system and their door access management company. So Jersey Shore has it, Wayne's Port has it, State College has it. So this opportunity arose that we could get this guest management system. So what this is is. It's a, it's an ea- it's actually an easier way for the people that man the doors to monitor people that come in. Because when they come into the schools now, there'll be an iPad there. That all guests have to put all their information in. It runs them through an FBI and a state police uh clearance system. To make sure that they're not any kind of predators or whatever it may be. Each school can actually set up a a do not enter list also. So if there's been people that. They've had bad experiences with this, each school can customize a list. So when that person comes to check in. It will alert the person that's monitoring the door as well to say, hey, this person is in a do not enter list. Do not let them in. So once the 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 parent or guardian puts all their information or the guest puts all their information in. Right next to it sits a printer that prints out an ID badge that automatically they can put on. It also sends a text message to that person letting them know, welcome to Liberty Curtain School. Pleasure to have you here. And then when that person, after a certain amount of time, it asks them, are you still in the school or whatever? And then it also allows them to log out.
Okay.
So this will be an upgrade at all the other schools. Right now, they they use a go guardian system with laptops and other kind of printers. Um, so this will cover you for ten years with this grant money. So those kind of expenses. The biggest expenses now with this new system will having to get the new labels cuz the equipment and such um is something that they will. The Verkata company will replace as it needs to be.
I I do have one question.
Please, you have the floor.
Um. The system sounds great and it sounds awesome. Um, I I I'm actually interested in it. Uh. But one question I have is all the information that the parents put in. The pictures and all that other stuff. What does Verkata do with that information? Does it stay within? The school or is that information now available for any third parties to use or anything like that? So. Phone numbers and emails and all this other stuff.
I mean, I I can verify that with Verkata. It stays in their cloud atmosphere because it, they run it through all the secure, like the FBI clearances. That that's where all the system does that. So. From my understanding, and I don't have verification, is is they don't sell it to other parties to so they can solicit, et cetera. It's purely to manage and making sure that the right people are in your building. Um, so I mean, I can verify that. Jeremy, do you have any more information on that?
Yeah.
Verkata Guest uh stores visitor info in its cloud with configure configurable. Retention periods of ninety days or whatever is configured by the administrative uh team. Uh, to divine. You know, how long names, IDs, photos are kept uh for auditing purposes or emergencies. Um, most non-match data is purged quickly. Data is encrypted and secured in the Verkata platform, uh preventing cross-organization sharing and includes features like. Digital NDAs and ID scanning for enhanced security. So again, there's probably more to it than that, but that's their sales pitch. Um, but I would say that. You know, we can go down through their specific policies, but that's kind of a brief overview. So ninety days or less, depending on what we. Uh, set it for and that's basically for so they can run the background checks. And keep that information. And it's also a convenience factor for the parent because the next time they sign in, they can just sign in. And not have to fill out all the information again if they so choose.
Sick. Okay. Um, any other comments, please? Well, thank you. This sounds like a great pro- project and appreciate all the time and the grant that you wrote and everything else. Good job. Thank you. Okay. K one, personnel. With the recommendation of administration resolved that the Keystone Central School Board of Board of Directors approve the following recommendation for the board. A motion to approve the human resources recommendations as pres- presented in in the exhibit. There are two. Attachments. The twenty twenty-five dash twelve, December. And then also the student teachers, December twenty-five, twenty-six. Um. So any, any uh comments, concerns? Hearing none. Moving on to the next one, curriculum co-curricular. L one. Athletic and student activities personnel, two attachments. With the recommendation of administration resolved that the Keystone Central School Board of Directors approve the following recommendation for the board. A motion to approve the athletic recommendations as presented in the exhibit. Number one, personnel agenda. Um, may I safely say this happens twice a year roughly, depending on the season, Dr. Redman?
Uh, which this?
The, for athletics. It's usually twice a year, I believe, depending on the season of the athletic. Well, be that as it may, don't worry about it. It's okay. Um, the first attachment, it shows the volunteers. Some are paid, some are not. So it, most of them, it's all listed here for you. If there's any questions. Um, the second attachment, which we, thank you volunteers. The second attachment is a student activities list. Student activities list is the personnel. We have a, the World Cultures Club Advisor and the Jeremy Black Esports Club Advisor. And I'm not sure if these are paid or are not paid. Um, I'm not sure what that means, but is there any comments? Questions? Uh, well, then I will go ahead and ask the question formally, please. Um, on the second attachment, student activities, the. The World Cultures Club Advisor and the Jeremy Black Esports Club Advisor, are these? Paid positions? Are they volunteer positions? If you just clarify on the report, that would be very kind.
So in in general, uh, when we get requests from students to start a club.
Uh huh.
Uh, they're kind of the driver of saying, hey, we wanna start a thing. And so so then we find a staff member to help support that. Uh, in terms of being paid positions or not, I'm not exactly sure.
Bro, Randy.
So these could potentially be paid club advisor positions. They would be approved as. Paid advisor positions, but there are requirements that a club advisor has to meet to get paid. There's an hours requirement both within the school day and also outside of the school day. So they would have to meet those hours requirements and submit all of that paperwork for approval.
Okay, that's lovely. That helps. So in other words, we're not approving. You're just letting us know that this club is going to be happening.
Yes.
So would we actually be approving this next week?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it's notification and for approval. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Item L two. With the recommendation of administration resolved that the Keystone Central School Board of Directors approve the following recommendation for the board. A motion to approve the career pathway as presented exhibits. Highlights a career pathway program developed by the Committee for Implementation next year. Attachment. Comments? Yes, Chris?
Uh, if you put two and three kinda together. I would really like to hear. A discussion with the CTC group. On what their thoughts are on this. Uh. This hasn't ran through curriculum either, correct?
Yeah, same, same thing.
Same thing, no meeting. I think we need to have a curriculum meeting on it. And go for it. So I would say that we table this until we can do that. So we can get more ex- explanation on it.
If you'd like, we have Mr. Lynch here and Ms. Klein who can both talk to that, uh, how that. Uh, interaction worked between both CTC and the high school. We also have Dr. Hall here who has been kinda instrumental in helping. Shape the course guide and Dr. Zangar who have really helped the pathways. So we have the people right here if the board is interested in learning more about it.
Well, if they're all here and they wanna talk about it, that's fine. But we need to know.
That's why we're.
We're gonna make a lot of changes here and we need to.
That's why they're here.
Be up to speed, okay?
Well, you you brought something to the table, Chris.
Hmm.
You made a recommendation.
I I said we should table it, but if they're here and they're willing to. Uh, tell us their thoughts on it. And it didn't go through a curriculum committee, all of a sudden here, three of you is gonna be on the committee anyway. So. We can do it. I didn't think you'd wanna do it at nine, ten at night. But if they're here and they wanna do it.
And this is why I sent the email out a couple of weeks ago when we knew that we weren't going to have this committee and saying, hey, if you have any questions, let us know so we can get ahead of that. Because I told you then that we needed to get this through in order for course requests to happen in a timely manner so we can get master schedules built for next year.
I just, once, I don't like the eleventh hour stuff. We should have done this beforehand. There should have been a curriculum meeting done to handle all this stuff.
Okay. So how would you like to proceed?
Kurt, you got something you wanna talk about or?
Well, I can say the CTC is definitely in favor of pathways. Cuz it leads kids to an end goal. All right. And withholding six hundred, six hundred plus kids. In the CTC, I think pathways is is a good model to go to.
Okay.
Okay, since, since this whole discussion started. Um. We've all been. I know Bill sat into pathways beings, Daisy's been at more than I have. Um, and and we've progressed through some, some things within the the course guide that you're gonna look at, but pathways, we're definitely all on board.
Okay.
Um, the thing we were a little bit afraid of, and it's in the guide, was the senior option. But Deb sat with my staff last week. Um, I was in some meetings and they, and we're gonna flip flop. The seniors to the front of the day. So that they'll come, that we will get them in the building. And they won't lose the CTC seat time and the district won't lose any. Any kind of funding because they're not getting that extra money on the CTC side. So we changed that. Daisy was involved in. Um, put some of the labor and industry laws that we looked at. And she was also involved in the GPA, I think, Megan. Um, her and Megan talked about GPAs for kids going out school to work. So that we have changed. Um, and I think uh. We're on, my staff and Deb came to a conclusion. Once we flipped that, we feel that this, this would be. Would be okay because our kids on co-op barely set foot in the building maybe for one class. So if they come in right away, we can get them out to their employer quicker.
Right.
And we have a hundred and some employers on our list. So we wanna keep the community well-versed with our kids. And we wanna keep the kids working and we wanna keep them in the community. So, you know, and where we're at with the six hundred kids. I I. And there's like fifty or so that end up on co-op. And then there's DO kids, which are just high school kids that go out to work. And so what else we're doing is Daisy's gonna set up, she already has it set up. A uh, to bring more businesses in, to get more kids employed. With other businesses. And that's gonna happen January, February? February twenty-fifth with uh Career Link.
Okay.
So we've gotten through a lot of things with this pathways. And then Deb. Knocked it home before Thanksgiving with my staff and we talked about a schedule that everybody's comfortable with.
Okay. So you're all good with it now that you've redone?
Yeah, my staff's right on board with pathways and, yep. And, and we're going to flip that schedule.
All right. Well, thanks for that explanation because I know there were some issues going around on it.
Well, I, I also just want to add, you know, we would love it if every student was a career in tech ed student.
Right.
We only have so many programs and we have more students than can fit in the, the programs that we have, you know? And Kurt is always looking for more programs to bring in. In the meantime, what we are doing through this pathways program is making all of our students employable by the time they leave our building. No matter what career it is that they want to go into, when you look at the PA career clusters that are in this presentation, our students will be leaving the Keystone Central School District job ready. Whether that means they're going straight into that career or if they're going to go into a four-year college, if they're going to go into a, a two-year program. If they are going to go into the military, they will be employable when they leave the Keystone Central School District. That's really the goal. And to give them classes while they're here that they know serve that future purpose.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
That's well done. Are you done? Are you, you done, Chris?
Yeah, I'm.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah. I just have a philosophical problem with, uh, the idea of them coming late or leaving early. We're not doing the greatest academically to begin with. Uh, we're supposedly being fostering a lifelong learning. Uh, there's always something more to learn. Uh, these graduation requirements should be considered a minimum requirement for graduation. I think we're setting a bad example saying, well, if you do okay, we'll let you out. So you don't have to stay here. There's a, there should be something else for them to learn and do. And I don't know what else I can say. I think it's a very bad idea.
Any other comments or concerns? Okay.
I guess one quick question. What is, uh, is there a grade requirement for certain to certain students? I'm assuming that's, that's how they go by.
So for the, the senior option, first of all, when we first approached the idea, we thought junior, senior. You do all of the things you are supposed to as a freshman and a sophomore. Then come junior year, we'll open this option. After some further conversation, we said, not juniors. This should be a senior only option. We looked at what Daisy requires for co-op and DO students. And we decided that that would be the same standard that we use. So we, we looked at a grade point average. Um, we have a standard grade point average. You have to have, we, I think, put in the document a two point seven five. Daisy does have a three point O GPA to go out on co-op and DO. We went with a two point seven five because when you look at that, it's a seventy five percent. So a seventy five percent in all of your classes, ninth through eleventh grade would mean that you are on track with all of your credits and have done the things you need to do. Um, we looked at attendance requirements, you know, we have an attendance improvement plan. If you are not showing to, up to school, you can't have the option of not being in school. So we looked at having an attendance requirement for students to take that option. And it also has to be signed off on by an administrator to show that you are in good disciplinary standing. So it's attendance, curriculum, behavior are the things that are looked at to determine if a student has met the requirements to be able to. Um, the senior option is leave school after our sixth period class. So that would be two academic periods of the day that they would leave early.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add quickly, um, really the purpose of that bill, I think philosophically, we are exactly in line that we want our kids here learning and continuing their education. I think the, the whole fundamental purpose of pathways is to make what kids are learning relevant to their future goals. And so by doing this, hopefully we are designing programming that leads to kids wanting to be here because there's more courses for them that aligns with their, with their end goal. Um, the other component of this is that we often um, monthly talk about our enrollment reports and how many students we are losing to outside cyber charters or virtual options. And a lot of that, when we talk to our kids is because they have more flexible options. Um, if they don't need, um, a lot of our students who are seniors don't need to take eight credits their senior year to meet that minimum requirement. And so they'll leave us their senior year, um, because they know they can go somewhere else and be, already be done. Um, so one of the things that we are also setting out to kind of tackle is how do we stay competitive and relevant amongst all the other options that kids have? Because the options kids have now are very different than when we went to school. Um, so just trying to stay competitive and stay relevant so that we can hopefully keep kids with us, um, long term.
Any other comments, concerns? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, please.
Want to follow up if everybody knows this. Yeah. I just want to make sure we're not, it's like we're conflating. I think that the students that go on and go co-op and go CT, that's learning. That's something useful. I mean, I was a decent student, but if you told me I could get out too soon, there's chances of me going home and reading a book weren't real good. Okay? Now, I didn't have video games to play, but I would have found something to do. Probably not particularly educational, and I think that that's what's going to be going on here. And, uh, what can, whoops, sorry. What can I say? That's, uh, that's a concern I have. And, but I think we, we need to be careful and not unless I read it wrong, it, there's no requirement that a student has to be involved in CT to, or, or the other things to, to get out early, right? So again, uh, I would favor finding something else, you know, even if they, it's something they choose, see independent study or something, but to make sure they're not home playing a video game.
So just to clarify, they can leave school and kind of do what they want, or are they going to go to an employer and work? Or they kind of have the free time to kind of do what it is they want to do?
So the, the answer to your question is they, if they want to be able to go to work, they have to do that through co-op or DO. Because the Department of Labor and Industry says you cannot work during the school day unless it's through an approved work program. So if these kids are planning on leaving two periods early to go to work, they should be doing it through diversified occupations. In which case they can actually leave much earlier than that. Because a senior who has done everything that they should be doing could come to school for their required remaining credits and likely be out of school after fourth period working and being, you know, the productive member of the community that Bill is talking about, you know, earning money to support, you know, their family and the things that they want and need. Um, if a student is not working through one of Daisy's programs, it would really be just leaving school early, but still being a student at Central Mountain High School.
Okay. Uh, cause I do understand, uh, his concern with that. Let, let's face it, when we were young, we're like water. We, we take the path of least, least resistance. So when given the option, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that the students are bad or anything. I'm just saying sometimes idle hands are the devil's work, as they say. So if a student's leaving early and, and just sitting at home, uh, gaming or something like that, that probably can be a little more productive with that time. If there could be any requirements that are set in place for said student as they go home early, maybe something extra academic wise or something like that. Not just, hey, you get to go home and lounge around the house for a couple of days. Cause you, obviously the parents aren't going to be home and nobody's going to be really keeping track of what they're doing. So I'm not against it, but there's, I think there's certain things to be looked at here with some students just leaving and not doing anything.
But I think the whole point is, any kids in the CTC, we want to see seniors go out to work. So we know as soon as we bring them in in the morning, we can get them out of here. If they have to take a class or do something like that, and that's our goal. We don't want to hold them so that their days are messed up and help hurt the employer. Here's the other little caveat that Labor and Industry has rules in place for kids that are in school and we have work programs that are approved by the state. For an employer to legally hire the student, they have to go through that program for a kid to leave early during school hours. Okay? Now, I've been down this road where people say, well, how do you find out? Well, really dumbfoundedly, I had a meeting with local advisory a week ago. And we found out that a local business had a kid working for them during school hours, which we had no connection to. And she brought this up and she said, I think every employer needs to know that I was fined five thousand dollars for ten minutes of school time. And she said, I will gladly come and give that speech to any of your employers that don't do it because they are serious and they will whack you. So if a kid wants to work, we will get them out to work. We just need to go through the proper channels to protect ourselves and protect the kid and the employer. I don't want to see an employer get in trouble. And that's, that's written in there now.
It's written in the, in the plan.
You done?
Yep. No, I, I agree with that. That's, that's great. If the student's going to work, I'm just talking. I'm referring to students that get to go and they're not working.
No, it's a good point.
Or something like that. That's all.
Good point. Bill?
Everybody else finished? Yeah. I just have another concern with something relative to sort of what Kurt just said is, uh, you know, and again, I don't want anybody to think in any way that I don't, I'm not in favor of your programs. They're, I think they're tremendous and they're good, you know? But again, kids are going to do what kids are going to do. You're saying, you know, uh, oh yeah, I'm, I, I hear you. I'm not allowed to work and they go and they get a job, you know, and just to, or we, can we be held at any responsibility for that? You know, it's great. You say, that's amazing. They get five, what was it? Five thousand dollars they got fined, you know? But would we have any culpability or liability if, if we let a kid go and they did that?
So according to the investigator from Labor and Industry, if Daisy would walk on a business property to see one of our kids and she sees another kid there and finds out maybe it's ours. I don't know. Maybe it's not, but it's a school age kid. Her liability falls on her to turn it into Labor and Industry.
So on, uh, the point, Dr. Baldi, that you brought up and Mr. Rodriguez that, that you brought up. Uh, as Megan said, um, we, our students have choices as to how to finish out their high school career. They, uh, could stay with us and stay full day, eight periods a day, stay, stay the whole time, uh, and all four years. Uh, or as they go on and get to their senior year, they could realize that if they were to make a change to cyber charter, they only need twenty one credits to graduate. As you said, often students take the path of least resistance. So if you're facing going to a cyber charter and graduating right now or staying here all eight periods, maybe the kids that would take advantage of the two period thing would just say, to heck with it, I'm going to a cyber charter and be done. And then we lose the students altogether. What we're trying to do is find a middle ground where we can keep the students with us for most of the day and not lose them entirely to one of these cyber charters. Right now we have two hundred and seventy five secondary students that live in our district that are attending a cyber charter school. Some segment of those students, we would have been able to keep with us if we had a program that would let them go for part of the day because they've completed the high school requirements. And they don't need to be here from a, a, a high school requirement standpoint. It's just that we have an eight period day. So our design thinking in this is very much about how can we retain our students to be part of us where we know that they're safe and they're well cared for and they're well educated for the time that they're with us. If we can give up a little bit of time, but keep the majority of it and know that they are safe and healthy and being cared for. I would much rather have that and give up those two periods than lose them altogether, which is what we're seeing. We're losing them altogether. And that's a much worse situation.
Thank you, Dr. Redmond. Any other comments? Discussion? Um, okay. Well, if I may say this. Um, first, I want to thank you all for putting so much time and effort into this. I know this has been an ongoing situation and it sounds like it's a great segue into something more in the future. This is why I'd like the board to consider, please. Whenever we take on a new project or we try to view something differently, the board has the power and the oversight to ask for an evaluation, six months in, a year later. So the board can, if they want, approve this project as presented. And then request six months from now or a year from now, they come before the curriculum committee or whichever committee you choose. And they will have an evaluation data for you. Okay. But I, I personally feel that that is an option that you should consider. So be that as it may, are there any other questions? Concerns? Okay, thank you. L four, we're getting through the alphabet, folks. L four. Um, Central Mountain, success areas for growth change, bucktail success areas for growth change. This is under curricular co-curricular. Um, co-curricular are items that are obviously not classes, but there are sports teams, et cetera. Is there any questions on the reports or any concerns? You have bucktails separated out. Yes, Chris, you have a floor.
Is there any way that with these reports, because if you folks look at both of them, they're both really different. Is there any way that when we put this report out that we could also add to it a cost analysis for what that program costs? And how much the booster support they got for it?
I have to look into that. I'm not sure how easy or difficult that would be off the top of my head.
Okay. Cause I, I noticed that these reports are vastly different and it's like, why? And if we could know what the programs are costing us. And what the boosters are doing for them.
Uh, I think what the, in terms of the program costs, I don't know that the athletic directors would have the best handle on that. Uh, because that's one of those things that's kind of centralized. Um, so that, that we'd have to take care of that in a different way than this report. Uh, but in terms of the booster reports, those are things that, uh, the board will be receiving in the summer report at the end of the year when the boosters have to send in all of.
When we ask for that report.
As part of nine fifteen.
Okay. Uh, that was the only question I had on that.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments? Um, all right. I'll go.
I I would like to request that we have a real quick executive meeting to go over an item with safety and security and a, uh, potential lawsuit. This will be real quick. I just got a couple of questions and the new board members need to know something about safety and security.
Okay, thank you.
So we have to vote to do it or?
Well, you can call and.
Yeah, we can call an executive session after, uh, if, if possible. If we can tell the folks that are here whether or not we'll be conducting the business when we return it, we'll just come back and adjourn. So they're just waiting.
We can do it at the beginning at the next meeting.
Well, we could do that too. As long as Randy will be here.
It's up to the board.
No, no, no. Saying we can tell the reason for doing it.
Oh, yeah, we can tell the reason. We can just do it now because Randy is here and he needs to stay here.
All right. Okay.
So again, the board chair, you're kind of in terms of that, we can hold an executive session. Again, I would appreciate it if let the folks up here know that we're, when we return, we will not be conducting any further business other than the journey.
Exactly.
Um, before we close, is there any other business the board would like just mentioned or discussed? Any, any topic? Okay. Um, uh, before I close, I just want to say thank you very much and your patience. It's been a long evening. You've done a terrific job. I'm really proud of everybody. We are going to adjourn. Um, after we adjourn, the school board directors and the uh, superintendent and Randy will be joining us for, uh, an executive session. So thank you very much. Be safe. Good night.